You have to watch down, because you get a lot of beer. Especially down in the town. Okay, it's time. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our special meeting today is Friday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, six o'clock AM. Please stand through the public.
We just do the fire, and we say America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, will never be in death or starve.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Here.
Mr. Chapa?
Here.
Mr. Ritter?
Here.
Ms. Gavrell?
Here. We have a call, so we'll move on. I want to acknowledge that we do have a prepared agenda. Is there any amendments to the agenda? We do have several requests to be heard.
We have Tim Thomas, Lorraine Golden, and Devin Ryan Mareska.
Thank you. I need a motion to accept a public comment.
Motion.
Second by Mr. Ritter, second by Mr. Ward. Any discussion? Call the votes, please.
Mr. Ward?
Here.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Ms. Gavrell?
Yes, motion, carry. We have no amendments to the agenda. I do want to say that I have to break the walls of council just for a moment. My phone is going to ring because my wheelchair is broken, and the manufacturer is going to call me to let me know that he's here with the part. So I hope you guys don't mind. Okay, we'll go on. Explanation of public procedure for the call.
Wait, we adopt the, we need to adopt the final agenda.
We need to adopt the final agenda. Motion.
Motion.
Second by Mr. Ward. Any discussion? Call the votes, please.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron?
Yes.
Mr. Chapa?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Ms. Gavrell?
Yes, motion, carry. Explanation of public comment. Procedure. Please come to the panel and state your name and your address. You have five minutes to speak on the subject you wish to speak to. We don't answer you. We're not here to make a debate. Uh, what, our comments come under council comments. Go ahead, stop.
Tim Thomas?
Tim Tom? Tim Thomas, three thirteen North Ray Street, Newcastle, PA. Good morning, everyone. Um, very quickly, uh, there isn't anything I can really stand up here and say that hasn't been said or written, uh, many times before regarding the matter at, uh, uh, three oh six North Ray Street with Luke Thomas. Understand that, uh, the restructuring coming soon, uh, involving the mayor and administrator and everything like that, doesn't make a bit of difference what my opinion on that is structurally and how that's going to affect the decisions and all that. I can tell you that having a Fortune five hundred, uh, background in business, starting as an engineer, and working my way up into executive management for about twenty-eight years, uh, I saw a lot of policy and procedure, and, uh, we had to constantly adjust that policy and procedure accordingly for the better good. I can't claim to see that that's happened here regarding this issue with Luke Thomas. For the life of me, I can understand that there could be possible laws out there to sustain this individual and protect him, being the villain, uh, against the rights of people such as myself, being the victims. The, uh, I'm sorry if I lost my train of thought, but the, uh, I, as I said to the mayor the other day in our discussion, uh, and I think he agreed with me, uh, this goes back further with previous administrations where the job wasn't done, the ball was dropped. Knowing the individual and the, and the case history that he's had in a previous location, as we all do, for the life of me, when he relocated, why the protocol wasn't put in place friggin' me to allow a one-man shop have a variance, or whatever you want to call it, to have no more than three or five vehicles at one time. This situation has continually got getting worse, and now he's again parking across the street with an abundance of equipment that he and vehicles that sits there and sits there, clearly identifying this once again as a junkyard, and nothing is happening whatsoever. Now, I've heard for the past couple of years that we're on it, we're doing this, it promises, and hopefully, and expectations and, and everything, but here we are nearing another year, and the situation has not gotten any better. Now, I'm aware that he is being represented by an attorney, for the life of me, if an individual had any conscientiousness, why anybody would want to represent him, knowing that situation. Obviously, that person doesn't live in the neighborhood and have to deal with this every day like I do. But nonetheless, it is what it is. He's entitled to the rights of an attorney. I just don't see the indepth, the aggressiveness and everything that's happening on our end of it to allow this guy to constantly make a mockery out of the city. Now, I am a concerned citizen, and I do care about Newcastle. I really do. It goes beyond the fact of what he's done in my neighborhood. This isn't a vendetta. This is just doing something proper. And, um, naturally, and rightfully so, very dissatisfied of the performance of the city for just taking this long and not seeing any resolution whatsoever. So, again, without, uh, having to repeat myself, uh, continuously, you know how I stand. I know you all agree, but I don't see anything being done. And I hope that moving forward, that whatever this new administration structure is going to be, that that does not diminish anything as it should not, the willfulness of getting rid of this guy once and for all. Prior to him, uh, Mr. Ross, that had a lot of body for all those years, was a one-man shop, and he respectfully had a decent place where he took no more on. This guy's, it's just his way of behavior, his mode of operation, and isn't right, and it needs to be resolved once and for all. So, please, Ted, do what you have to do legally. Get this guy zoning, change things, whatever has to be done. I can't imagine that there's any laws out there that can allow him to go on the way he is. Thank you.
Lorraine Golden?
Good morning. Going over, good morning, Lorraine Golden, three one three East Edgewood Avenue, Newcastle, one six one oh five. I'm here for a couple of reasons. One, I wanted to let you know how things are, uh, going with Dan Volkovich, who has actually ripped me off for twenty-seven hundred dollars. I did contact Detective Burke, whose name was given to me, and unfortunately, there's nothing that he can do. So he recommended that I contact the Attorney General and file a consumer complaint, which I did, and I wanted to let the, uh, council know that I did mention in there that, um, he was referred to me by a member of the city. So, um, I don't know if the Attorney General will be contacting you, but I wanted to let you know and give you update on that. And also, I heard about how City Hall is closing down and how, you know, a lot of stuff is going to be dropped on the mayor's plate with a huge increase, and that, you know, this wasn't anything that was brought to the public until last minute. Um, I, as a resident here, a new resident, I, I've never heard of such a thing as, you know, just kind of dumping things last minute. And then, it, it's very irritating that they're holding, you know, you guys are holding this at a time when nobody can really attend. Everybody's at work, you know? And you guys should have done this in an evening where, you know, more citizens could come and address this, and you should have waited until you've heard from some of the people that live here before you go voting on it. But that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golden.
Devin Ryan Mareska?
Good morning. Devin Ryan Mareska, three zero eight East Edgewood Avenue, Newcastle, PA, one six one oh five. Uh, like Ms. Golden just said, I don't appreciate the fact that you had a special meeting here today in the middle of workday on Friday. I mean, it's akin to politicians doing the document dump on Capitol Hill. More trash that we really don't need, and we shouldn't have that pattern of behavior. You know, Ms. Golden's never got a resolution, Mr. Thomas never got a resolution about his stuff, I never got a resolution about my array of issues, and, you know, today, I assume you're going to be voting for Mr. Frye, uh, to take on the mantle of City Administrator, and you didn't post it, you didn't take any applicants, no interviews, no search, and I read the press briefing that you sent last night. Uh, I do read those things, Mr. Frye. You know, this doesn't need to be done until, what, twenty twenty-four, when Home Rule starts? No, it doesn't. Okay. Why the eleventh hour are we doing this? I know you had a fight with the Act forty-seven committee, and I know you can't speak to me, I'm not looking to get a response from you, but, you know, you still had forty-five days until the end of the year. You couldn't put a job search out. Uh, I know you're going to be taking on more responsibilities, all right, but a hundred and ten thousand for a city that doesn't have that kind of windfall of cash unless you came into some Powerball ticket I don't know of? Okay? A hundred and ten grand. You're, you're doing well. I'll say that, because you took on the role of co-enforcement director and some other stuff you're going to be doing. You know, I want to read this, you said this, Mr. Frye, February fifteenth, twenty twenty. "My focus since being elected mayor has been to infuse accountability and integrity into our government. The era of nepotism, jobs for friends, and political paybacks is over." No, sir. No. Uh, Sean Anderson, he got paid forty-eight thousand, plus you gave him a stipend of almost twenty grand to take on more roles similar to what you're going to be doing. Sixty-eight grand. He was the highest-paid city person at the time. That's David Ward's cousin. Nepotism. Uh, Robert Lyles, is that, I believe that's his name. He was on your team for a campaign for mayor. Uh, part-time secretary. You got hired right after you got elected. Eric Francis over there, he's in charge of the garbage. He was on your, he was your campaign manager. You gave him a job. Not bad or nothing, Mr. Francis. I know, I see the eyes. All right? But still, you know, it doesn't look good. It doesn't look good. You, you did four years again, and then you did two years in university of Pitt, and I'm glad to see an educated man hold power in office and hopefully do good. Did you ever take a class in optics? All right? Because optics, what was that? Okay. Optics, it doesn't look good. All right? You, you became mayor, and then, what, a year and change later, you applied for lieutenant governor's position, you run for that. Doesn't look good. Come back because you lost. I know you, you say you were trying to send a message and all that, you know, good, noble chivalrous. Now, you're going to City Administrator. I like how you're just trying to make your step up, step up, step up with salary, too. And who gets to be the mayor? Ms. Gavrell? Uh, what is that, forty years, almost? Plus or minus a year, you've been in between Elwood City and here? Uh, you made a career out of politics. A career. Supposed to be, you know, a civic duty, a public service. I don't want to see that as my mayor. All right, we're, we're in bad shape as a town, real bad shape. And it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, you, really? Couldn't be sixty-five, seventy-five even? No, we gotta go for the whole enchilada, a hundred and ten. Uh, come on. And then you pull this, you know, ten AM on a Friday, everybody finds out on a Wednesday night, uh, from Newcastle News. Uh, that was the only way I found out about it. Uh, it's wrong. It comes off, and just because you, you can do it, doesn't mean you should. An ethics class, did, did you get that into your degree? You know, your bachelor's and your master's. I know you say in your press briefing, yeah, it's common for government to hire, and corporate America to hire from within, doesn't mean you should do it. Now, I'm not saying you're not the good candidate for the job. I'm not. All right? However, you should have just posted it out there and compete with those candidates, not just automatically appoint. And again, not that my opinion has any clout, but I say hold off and wait as a council, because you've really pissed the people of this town off online. All right, it's everywhere. And, you know, not enough people showed up today because it's a Friday at ten AM, a workday. Yeah, you would probably see a windfall of people show up here if it were six-thirty at night like a regular council meeting, just like the garbage meeting I heard about that happened before I moved here, where half the town showed up and actually put a stop to that. But, thank you, guys, for sharing.
Have a great day. Administration comments?
Yes, I have a few comments, and I know that this is, uh, semantics and optics, so this is, uh, it kind of is what it is, and, and I've explained this to numerous people all throughout the community, to Newcastle News, various people that reached out about the article. I just want to assure everybody, you know, this isn't, this, this decision, very well detailed in the press release, and if you've read this press release, you'd understand the situation that we're in right now, uh, Mr. Mareska. You'd understand that, you know, a grant was promised to the city. Council acted on it. Council gave the resolution to the Act forty-seven administrator coordinator, which in the law, the Act forty-seven law states that the Act forty-seven coordinator or the administration can request a grant. The administration didn't request a grant, Act forty-seven requested a grant, and they acted on it. And then later, just a few weeks ago, come back to us and say, we're not giving you the grant. That's the situation we're in. That's the situation pushing us forward. We don't have the money. I, we all agree with you. We don't have the money for this position. Home rule charter didn't effectively, and do their job to evaluate that process. We were asked as administration not to add anything or influence the, the, the decision-making within the home rule charter. So now, when we have, when the, when it falls back on the administration's play, it's our job, our job, my job, to work with our council to fix that. So, a hundred and ten thousand dollars is an absorption, with my salary current, which I was, still would have got paid last year, or next year, absorbs into that, we would could not afford to have somebody come in with my salary and the salary of an administrator to do what? Who knows? Who knows who that person would have been? If, if right now, you mentioned forty-five days, it's budget season. So the decision needs to be made now, in the proposed budget, which goes out, goes before council on Tuesday, to plan for over the next forty-five days for them to make the decision. Those are the processes that are, that need to be followed. Now, we can allocate it, we can put it in there, but guess who's going to pay for it? The taxpayers. Again, spelled out in this. So I get it. I get it. The optics, the, if you want to say ethics, whatever you got to say, but again, what we have decided, and what we discussed, is didn't have anything to do with pay, didn't have anything to do with the person. This is me stepping down so we don't impact the taxpayers who are having trouble putting food on their tables, can't put gas in their cars, having trouble paying their utility bills. Or if you're not, if you're not feeling those effects, I'm, I'm a father of three. The way I used to go grocery shopping a few years ago to what I do now is completely different. Completely different, and it's going to remain that way because costs continue to rise. So higher salary, no higher salary. This is the reality of the situation. We're not increasing taxes to pave more streets, to demo more houses, to build new properties, to bring, bring development to our city. We would be raising taxes almost three quarters of a mill of tax for jobs. When we still, we have people here working for the city who are out day and night policing our streets, putting out fires, paving our streets, plowing our roads, cutting the grasses that are high, who are getting paid below a livable wage. Did you look at that in the budget? I mean, twelve dollars an hour, thirteen dollars an hour, we can't afford that, and we wouldn't be able to afford that if we went down this path. That's what was considered. That's what was considered. So we wait till January, it's January twenty twenty-three that this needs to happen, but it's been in the home rule charter since, since the people voted for it. It's just unfortunate that at this point, we don't have the support of the state. Now, I did mention in the press release also, council is going to either one, talk to them, and it's not a fight between us and, and, and Act forty-seven, we meet with them biweekly, they come in, they talk to us, they have, council has their meetings with them. It's not a fight. This is just what happened. So council is, again, one, they're going to get, talk to our Act forty-seven coordinators to have them write the grant, because they already acted on it, they requested it, and they acted on it. Or two, the administration's going to write the grant knowing the cost of what was in the home rule charter, or you guys organize to put it on a referendum and change the charter. I mean, there's a lot to the puzzle. There's a lot of pieces to this puzzle. And, I mean, I did bring today, and it's just ironic that it happened to be in the Newcastle newspaper today, that when we had the question of internal hires, nobody's at the school district right now. Three, unposted promotions, higher than salary denied. Nobody's at, and they raise property taxes as well. They're a governing body as well. So we get it. I get the optics, the semantics, I get it all. I've worked for the federal government, I've worked for nonprofit management, now I'm the mayor of the city of Newcastle. If you want to foot the bill, foot the bill. Let council know today that that's what you want to happen. You got phones, you got emails, you have, we have meetings, we got a meetings next week, come back in. It's not over, but today, our, this meeting is about how we support the people, our staff, our community, well into the future. February twenty twenty-four is our deadline to get out of Act forty-seven. We received our, probably the first quarterly update from Act forty-seven, saying that we are in good financial standing to get out of Act forty-seven. So we didn't do anything? This council didn't do anything? I, I don't see it. I mean, I definitely don't agree this council, this mayor, this administration didn't do anything, but we're set to get out of Act forty-seven, which was not the outlook in twenty twenty? Wasn't the outlook for fifteen years? Or is this politics? Is this Democrat or Republican? Because that's not, that's not it. It should never be. This is local government, local management, voted home rule charter for local control. This is, that's, that's what you signed up for. So we're here today, and council, I don't know where the votes are going to go. This was an option, this was a proposal to them. Let us act and continue to manage this city and do what we have to do as your public servants to make sure your quality of life needs are met, to continue to try and push for things like Mr. Tim Thomas, and we're, I told him, I, I get it. It's not exciting, it's, it, it, it's, it's not favorable, our answers, but again, to say we're not working is, is a lie. Y'all have opportunities to come and speak, ten AM, six PM, nobody comes to me. People came to the garbage meeting, it was already signed and dated and done. The hallways were filled, the stairways were filled, the room was filled. It was open. We've been saying this whole time, be engaged in the process. Come, ask questions, talk. Don't come in here screaming and cussing people out.
Mr. Ward?
Um, yes, I just want to, uh, personally, uh, thank, uh, council administration, uh, for the support and love of, as a lot of you know, my father did pass away last week, and I guess that we have memorial service, I just want to thank you all for, uh, reaching out and giving me the support and love. I'll see you over here, Terry, uh, this is my business. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, just to speak on this, uh, so as most people in this room are aware, I'll be voting no on the contract. I believe one of the main reasons that, uh, taxpayers opted for a new form of government was the perception of politics. As the saying goes, perception is reality. I supported changing the language for requirements of city administrator, adding in nonprofit or business experience. I believe this would increase our applicant flow. As I said privately on calls with our Act forty-seventh team, I believe this position should be posted nationwide as we need to attract as many candidates as possible. My duty to the taxpayers is to hire the best person to promote growth and move the city forward. As you're aware, this position was not advertised, no interviews have been conducted, and this vote is being made based on the thought process that the city could save money. If we hire someone externally, we continue to pay mayor free price hour, salary, and benefits, plus a new city administrator's salary and benefits. This current agreement will increase the city's expenses by roughly fifty-seven thousand. We do not know the price we would have paid for another person since we not searched. The recommended salary range was a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty thousand, plus benefits, depending on qualifications. I believe this position should have been advertised, we should have vetted all applicants and chose the best candidate. Act forty-seventh team via the state, all but promised us grant funding for the city administrator. Seventy-five percent will be paid in year one, fifteen year two, and twenty-five in year three. That did not include the benefit package. The state has since told us, due to us changing the requirements of the city administrator's experience, they will not support us getting this funding. I do believe if we follow the correct process for hiring, we could have fought for this funding. Regardless, we need to apply for this funding and fight for it. For me, this decision is, for me, this is a decision of right and wrong. That's all I have.
Mr. Chapa? Mr. Ritter?
I just have a few things. I read the press release, and a lot of people sit there and say, but council does nothing. What do you guys do? I'm a businessman, I own an construction company. Every day, there's email after email after email. Mr. Thomas, I assure you something, there's work being done. You might not see it, but there's email after email. I emailed council administration, I emailed zoning last week about it, and the email you sent, I believe, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, everybody knows I'm going to be a yes vote on this today because it saves the city money. People sit there on Facebook, I've been threatened through text messages and phone calls about voting yes on this, that I will not have a seat if I run for reelection. To me, that is complete bullshit. I'm voting on what I feel. I'm protecting the taxpayers. If we put a, uh, city manager in there, what do we have to do? We have to raise taxes. I don't want to raise taxes. We haven't raised taxes, I don't want to raise taxes. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mary.
Ms. Gavrell?
I have several things, uh, about the Ray Street junkyard. I've never been a person who drove on Ray Street alive, but since I've been having to be driven, it's the route that we take. And, um, and I'm apologize, as you are, Tim. Um, I'm going to say this word to the solicitor, Van Damis. We need to think about Van Damis. Um, the other place is the Tire House in Mahoney Town. Um, we looked at that a couple of years ago, it's time to move forward and be done with this. That's a health issue. Let me tell, let me all say this, since it's my turn to talk. I want to talk about executive session. Executive session is granted to members of governing bodies in order to, um, be able to speak about contract negotiations, um, of real estate, um, things like that. Um, it's not to keep the public out, but they are confidential, and they should stay within the group. And that is why people in council get threatened, because it goes outside the group. I'm going to say this to you guys, too. I was a no vote for Chris. Everybody knows, that's sitting here knows that, I said it very clearly, because my question was, what have you done for three years? You know, nobody gets into an elected position because they want to put their head out on a chopping block like a chicken. Um, you, you run for office because you are committed to working for your community and for the people in your community. That's why you run for office. Let me just point out a few things that have occurred in the past few years. Um, the debt reduction of the city, our MMO when I first started here was how much?
Close to four million.
It was close to four million, and we're down to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars now. That's for the, uh, pension funds. We've had no taxing increases in three years. We did one point five million dollars in paving this year, and another point five million in paving on Granton Mercer Street. So we're to try to do the best that we can, um, with the little that we have. Um, and just so that you know, because I believe everybody- And just so that you know, because I believe everybody should be held to what they are doing all day long, I have requested in this contract that, um, that a day to day, um, a report is put out to council of what is being done, what is the outcome, so that we know and that the citizens know. That's all I have. I think that's all the little news I know. But I, I, I wanna, I wanna tell you, I sat here when Act forty seven was first brought into the city of Newcastle, 'cause we had no money in the accounts, none. We have gone from, and I recognize that we've had some windfalls, and we're able to do this type of paving. But we have gone from being a financially distressed city to being financially solvent at this point. Um, we have a rainy day fund, we have capital improvement funds. We have done everything that Act forty seven, we are ready to exit next year. It should be to the great delight of all the residents of the city of Newcastle. I think it's a great delight to all of us. And that, that is not, um, because we just sat back and said, oh, we'll just let it hap, it doesn't happen that way. We've had Stephanie Dean, who is the most fantastic, um, financial officer that you could ever have, leading us the way, even to twelve years of a past administration. And I'm not neglecting the past administrations. You may not always like, um, what we do, I don't always like what the citizens do. I don't like, I don't read Facebook anymore, because, um, I find that, um, it's just not worth anybody's nervous system to read that stuff. If you don't know, then come here and ask us. You know, my phone number is everywhere, anybody can have my phone number, I don't care. Call me up, I'm happy to take calls. I'm always happy to answer to the residents of the city. That's my only focus and my only thing to do, that's what I have to say. The other thing is that we are also in negotiations right now with the community college of Bieber County to bring the college downtown. So there will be foot traffic, which will then increase, uh, businesses wanting to move in, I'm sure. So, um, those are the things that are going on. And with our discussion about moving over to the library, another great way of having foot traffic, because we can, we can share services with the library. That's all I have, anybody else? Thank you. We're, we're on to, um, resolutions, we have none on the table. We have two new resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty two dash two three two. Do you wanna, um, read this?
My name is Christopher C. Frye Jr. as the city administrator, effective January first, two thousand twenty three, and authorizing the individual designated by the city charter to enter into an employment agreement with Christopher C. Frye Jr. as the city administrator commencing January one, two thousand twenty three, and ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty three.
Thank you. Uh, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Ritter?
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Chapa, any discussion? I just have a couple of things, I wanna say this is a one year contract. And so thus in one year, you know, we are, we are, we're, believe it or not, we are now the boss. It's never been like that, because the way, uh, third class city code is, we were legislators, not administrators. That's why we didn't get into the day to day, um, processes. This is a one year contract, and after a year, we can evaluate and, um, decide what to do, either keep Christopher I or move on. To try to find someone to, to learn this budget alone, I'm sure that if you question any of us on this budget and how well we understand it, I think some of us understand it, I don't think everybody does. It's a, this is a learning curve, and to learn Newcastle, Newcastle is a unique city in itself. Um, the people are unique, the neighborhoods are unique. And to, I think that someone could come in here and just learn this and, and move here, and, and leave it, and quit a job for a one year contract is, um, basically unheard of. My vote is yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Cameron? Mr. Chapa?
Yes.
Mr. Ritter?
Yes.
Ms. Gabriel?
Yes, motion carried. Ordinance is on the table, Council Bill twenty twenty two dash third in the line, amending Article one sixty nine.
Oh, that one can stay on the table, we'll remove that on Tuesday.
We have nothing for final action, we have nothing but introduction. I'm willing to pay, I'm motion for adjournment.
Motion?
Motion by Mr. Ritter. Second by Mr. Cameron, any discussion, we are adjourned at ten thirty. Thank you very much for celebrating.